Ladies and gentlemen, would anyone please at this time stand for the pledge? At this time, I'd like to introduce the Mayor of Troop, Joseph Tropiak. Joe is a veteran of the Air Force, having served three and a half years from 1954 to 1958. He was in high school when he joined the military at the age of seventeen. He served active duty during the peacetime era of Korean War in Germany during the last years of the ten-year occupation of post-war World War II. He was honorably discharged with the rank of Airman First Class E4. Mayor, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Will everybody stand, the top part standing will pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I hand this over to the mayor, I would just like to have a moment of silence for all of our servicemen and servicewomen and our veterans and all of our first responders that are protecting us every single day of the week and making sure that our country is safe. And also, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Hall County Sheriff's Office, Georgia. Deputy Sheriff Nicholas Dixon was shot and killed following vehicle pursuit of a stolen Red Lake Nation Conservation Department Tribal Police, Conservation Office, Open Barons, suffered a fatal heart attack while investigating an illegal harvesting. Metro Nashville Police Department, Tennessee, Police Officer John Anderson was killed in a vehicle crash. Please keep our first responders and their families and their thoughts and prayers in this horrible moment where they lost their loved one. I'd like to thank the mayor, council, and all of the citizens of Troop for the opportunity to utilize their council chambers, beautiful council chambers. And we have four on-the-road meetings. This is something that Commissioner Cummings came up with when we first took office to make sure that the citizens had an opportunity to reach out to the commissioners beyond the fact of our numerous meetings that we have during the budget cycle. So this is the second of four that will happen this calendar year of 2019. With that being said, Mayor, the floor is yours again.
Come on over to the mic.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
As the Mayor of Troop, Joe Tropiak, on behalf of Troop Council President Rich Koharski, Council Vice President Bob Magliogan, council members Vince DeNana, Mike Charba, Charlene Tomasavich, Wayne Williams, and Anthony Genjemi, and our entire department staff and the Borough of Residence, Welcome County Lackawanna Commissioner Patrick M. O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Nortariani, and Commissioner Lorraine A. Cummings to the Borough of Troop. We are most honored to have your presence here to conduct the July 10, 2019, County of Lackawanna Commissioners Meeting in the Borough of Troop Council Chambers. So at this time, Commissioners, our council chambers are ready for your conducting of your meeting. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for having me. Cool.
Yes, thank you very much. We love it outside.
It's very warm outside today. Thank you. I'd like to bring this Board of Commissioners meeting to order Wednesday, July 10, 2019, 6:00 PM in the Troop Borough Building. I'd like to make a motion for the approval in minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
We're going to go right into proclamation presentations. Nineteen dash zero one six zero. This is a proclamation presentation for Troop's consequent-essential 125th anniversary. And this is a big day for all the citizens of Troop. I'd like to have the council and the mayor to come up to the podium just to talk a little bit about what 125 years means to the citizens of Troop. Absolutely. This is a monumental time, 125 years, and the history is amazing. They've actually doubled in size by population and more than doubled. And it is, it's a great place to live. So I'd like to have you say a few words, and we have a nice, beautiful proclamation acknowledging your 125 years of being here and great living and families, that families that have been here for generations upon generation. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I'd like to hear it and then congratulate.
Okay, got it.
Well, one thing, Troop's 125 years old. We were incorporated in 1894. Our first mayor was Mayor Troop, and he was an investor in real estate. He saw the potential in the area as a good place to start a community. Eventually, Troop became a village under the Borough of Dixon City in the mid-1880s or so. We had a proclamation passed just to become our own borough. It didn't happen. One of the judges, Sanderson, I believe, set it aside. And then in 1893, the proclamation passed again, and then it was officially approved in 1894. At that time, we had a population of about 1,600. Today, we're a growing community. We have 4,100. We have support of all the citizens in the town, and then we have our large industrial park here that adds to our being a quality town to live in.
Beautiful. Thank you. Great job, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'd just like to echo the mayor's comments by saying, thank you again for being here. We certainly appreciate it, and we would welcome you back at any time. We're certainly a little cramped in these quarters, but, you know, in the event of any need for any larger events, we have the beautiful Troop Civic Center across the street with a large gymnasium that can seat over 200. So we would invite you back at any time.
Bunch of time to be back.
Yes. Okay. We have senior luncheons every Monday.
(laughing).
Anyway.
We may stop for that, too.
Once again, thanks, and I think you said it all when you said Troop is a great place to live. And it is. I've lived here all my life. Very proud of that. I think there's a lot of good things on the horizon for Troop, a couple very large developments that are in planning stages, hopefully will be coming to fruition in the very near future. So again, I think the future is very bright. We had a great centennial weekend, Saturday and Sunday, great parade Sunday, great turnout, and actually, the borough put up $5,000 to provide free rides to all the children for both days.
Nice weekend.
So it was a great weekend, but the person that deserves all the credit is Andy Hagadis, who's our fire chief, but he was our centennial chairperson. So Andy, if you'd like to...
He has the fun job, had the fun job.
Yes. I mean, unbelievable. All, he put together all the details. We were just on the planning committee, so ours was the easy job, but he did all the heavy lifting, so to speak, all the preparation. You name it, he did it. So, Andy, I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
I'd just like to say, well, welcome to the Borough of Troop, and if you notice, it is on our signs, that Troop is a great place to live. I'm born and raised here. I had the distinct honor of being selected by Troop Borough Council to chair the event. We learned a new word this year, quasquicentennial.
Yeah.
So that was a big one for us. Hopefully, we'll be around some of us for the sesquicentennial, which will be 25 years from now. But it was a great community event. It was well-received. The weather cooperated, and it's just an honor for me to serve in that capacity and also as the Borough Fire Chief. I love the community. I love the county. I thank you all for coming here this evening and recognizing us, and it's just Lackawanna County is a great place, and our municipal building and all our services are open to anybody of the county should they need anything. We're here to help. So thank you.
We'd like to thank you, first and foremost, for being a first responder.
Thank you.
Because since September 11th of 2001, being a first responder has dramatically changed.
It's not getting any easier.
They're the first line of defense against terrorism and everything else. So it is a different world, but there's some great people that step up to the plate and take these jobs, and they're not easy jobs at all.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for saying that. We appreciate that. We have a very, very successful and fully functional fire department in the Borough of Troop here at Station Number Three at the rescue on Dunmore Street. We have 40 active members under the age of 60, which is unheard of today. Volunteerism is at an all-time high in our borough. We do share some support from mutual agencies in Dixon City and Blakely, and we work with every agency as best we can, but we can't do that without council support and the community's support, and for that, we're grateful because we have that support. It's very, very critical to having success, and this guy makes a lot of it happen, and so does this guy. Love them. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for making great things happen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, congratulations, and I'm going to attempt it, okay? Let's see. On your quasquicentennial.
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 125 years.
Let me try again. Quasquicentennial. Thank you. Okay, congratulations, and you have a beautiful building as well, and we greatly appreciate the wonderful air conditioning that we're providing.
A little warmer here now.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all your hard work. Thank you again for all your work, and the volunteerism is wonderful, and it's nice to hear that because, you know, we always talk about how, when we were younger, you'd see the, you know, I always talk about it anyway, I'd see, you know, all the kids running when that, you know, alarm went off to answer the call, to volunteer for the fire department, ambulance, whatever. So it's great to hear that. Thank you for all, please extend, you know, our gratitude for their work.
And the police department.
Yeah. And thank you both, and Mayor, wonderful job, wonderful building, and appreciate the fact that you've allowed us to intrude on your building for a little bit so that we can meet the people of your town, and, you know, if they have any problems, complaints, or just any questions for the county commissioners, that's why I am so grateful to my fellow commissioners for starting this evening meeting that I requested so that we can get out to meet great people like all those here in your borough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're honored to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Nortariani?
Troop is one of my favorite second homes. I spent a lot of time in Troop with Pete's father, and Pete, the old tax collector, was Bob Bargraves, and it's a very warm and opening town, and I'm thrilled to be here again. I spent a lot of time in this building. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to come here, and again, it is a beautiful, beautiful place.
Thank you. So we have your proclamation. Whereas on April 16, 1894, the Borough of Troop, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, was incorporated. Today, we honor the borough and its residents, past and present, as it celebrates its quasquintennial 125th anniversary, whereas first attempts to have Troop cut off from Dixon City Borough was made, separate subdivisions failed in 1888, and again in 1893. Finally, a petition signed by all but, all but, I think it was all but eight residents, they must have been mad at those residents, huh? Of the village section was presented to the courts and confirmed. Whereas Troop was named after Civil War surgeon Dr. Benjamin H. Troop, is the home, was what is what understood as the land where anthracite coal was first mined in Lackawanna County at the old Anderson farm. I didn't realize that, Danny. Did you realize that? I didn't realize that, first place. Whereas, when incorporated, Troop's population was at 1,639 residents, 266 dwellings, this is real cool, nine hotels, eight stores, two storehouses, two churches, and its own posse, its own post office, one grade school with four teachers, and a small one-room school, a butcher shop, and a colory. Today, Troop has a population of 4,088 citizens, with just over 1,400 single-family households. You guys have grown by 2,449 citizens over the last 125 years. I would say that's great, fabulous. Now therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Nortariani, Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim on behalf of the 214 citizens that July 10, 2019, be Troop's consequentennial day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations to all of you and the citizens. Congratulations. Now, two years ago, I would have read this, but I hadn't, you have to blow it up to that. So we have this for you, would like to present it to you and the mayor and the fire chief. Do you want to, off front there? Ricky, will you come off front?
Yeah, if you can come off front, unless they go to the back.
Rick, you can move in.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Do we have anyone else from, anyone else like officially a citizen?
Name's Samantha.
Come on, smile. Anyone else? This is your day, you know, it's great to celebrate 125 years of greatness. Smile. Thank you. Thank you. (applause). Okay, nineteen dash zero one six one. We do a Good Works presentation at usually each one of our meetings, and we're coming to Troop, and we wanted to make sure that we, make sure that we kept everything all in Troop. And when I was reading the paper, and I actually knew about it beforehand, I saw this picture basically of your 125th anniversary, and the mayor running around with his petition because Troop wants its own identity. Not that they didn't have their identity, but they want their own zip code. And they deserve to have their one, their own zip code. Is it, what's it going to be? If everything goes right, it's 1-8513, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So they really deserve that. And then 2000, hopefully by the end of the summer, all the citizens will have signed the petitions and everyone else, and I brought it back to the Board of Commissioners, and I wanted us to vote on it, that we believe as one of our 40 municipalities, that Troop needs to have its own zip code. So that's why we're here today. That's one of our big reasons for coming here, plus to celebrate your 125 years. But we wanted to make sure that because that means something to the citizens of Troop, and like I said, you've gone up over 200,000, 2,000 and some citizens since you were incorporated. So we have a little certificate here for Mayor Joseph Tropiak acknowledging his dedication to the zip code plan. So we're going to come up and give that to you. (applause). Yeah, when you come off this one.
Where's his name?
Come on, Mayor, we'll put you right in the middle.
There you go.
Absolutely. Everybody here, smile. Ready, Commissioner? Look at me. Maybe I should turn the camera on, huh? There we go, pick a couple. One more, everybody smile. Very good, thank you. Congratulations.
That's great. I hope everything works out.
Well, we're going to be voting tonight, so. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, that'll be one of our votes tonight, and we'll have the mayor and council come up and talk a little bit about what the zip code means to the community probably about another 30 minutes from now. And we'll do a letter that's going to be signed by the three of us, Mr. D'Enzo, signed by the three of us, that can go with the packet that's going to go to the United States Post Office requesting that they become their own zip code, 1-8513.
And that's when he'll talk?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to have him come up at that point, which is going to be in a few minutes. Nineteen dash zero one six three. Commissioner Cummings?
Small Business Spotlight, Sanderson Street Tavern is, who's here from Sanderson Street Tavern?
Hi, I'm Heather McGrath. I'm here on behalf of my brother, J.J. Perron, and his business partner, Pete Salvatore, to thank the commissioners and Lackawanna County for this honor. Unfortunately, it's the first time in six years since we opened in 2013 that they took a week's vacation.
And you're tied to a, you're tied to an establishment, right? You're tied to it.
We also want to thank the Borough of Troop for letting us in their community and being so wonderful, and our loyal customers, who I see a lot in this room, from all over Lackawanna County. I have with me Matt Tanner, who's a fan favorite, our cook, if you had any questions.
Man, talk, let's talk a little bit about your establishment. What kind of food you have, you know?
We have fresh-made food every day. We have burgers, fresh-pressed burgers, homemade mozzarella sticks, homemade, what do we have, fried pickles. We have hoagies, wraps, anything you can think of, we basically have it. We have 20-plus wing flavors. We have wing bites, phenomenal. My personal favorite is the Sweet Tide Chili, if anybody wants to come try some. That's what I would recommend to you. But great food, you guys should definitely come down. It's a great time, family, friends, great environment.
So who's the owner, and how did this all start? Do you have the history on that?
My brother is one of them. There've been a couple partners that have come and go, but him and Pete Sal started in 2013 as silent partners, and then came in full-time.
Doing good?
Yep.
Well, I just want to make sure that we get their story out there. That's basically, I like to tell the story so that it gives other people, you know, innovation and the courage to go ahead and open their business as well throughout our community. So thank you so much for the work you're doing. Thank you, chef, and thank you for everything that you're providing for us and for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Applaud your efforts. It's a lot of work, and, you know, if you enjoy your work, then you'll enjoy the business. We wish you much success in the future and continued success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nortariani?
I'm very familiar with the restaurant, and they do have great food. It's a nice place. It's a clean, family-friendly place. It's a wonderful stop, and good luck, and I'm sure it'll be fine.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Heather, Matt, and J.J. Perron undertaking this type of establishment. I'm involved in catering. It's 24/7. If certain employees don't show up, you become that employee. If you need something, you sometimes don't have somebody go and get it, you go get it yourself, and you make sure that everybody comes in, has a smile on their face, make sure they really enjoy it. And the people that you have, the citizens that you have come into your establishment, become family and friends.
Absolutely.
And that's amazing. And the job's blood, sweat, and tears. It's not, it's not an easy job, and like you said, they're just going on vacation two years later.
Six.
Six years later. Because that's, that's what it's about because, you know, I mean, what you put into it is what you get out of it, and that's what your brother and the two of you, you know, working there, that's why it's, the establishment's going well. So we'd like to congratulate you. Let's talk about, okay, we know, we know, we know the name, the Sanderson Street Tavern. What's the address?
655 Sanderson Street.
Okay, so it's just on the street from here. What's the hours? What are the hours that you're open in? What days of the week?
Every day except Monday.
Monday we close, yeah.
And during the summer, not for lunch.
So the winter time, it opens up for winter, for winter, it's lunchtime?
Yeah.
Cool. So what time do you open during the day?
4:30, 4 o'clock.
4:30, 4 o'clock? Great, great, great.
I mean, I probably said that time wrong, but we usually don't want to go 4:30, 4, but 4 to 4:30, we're usually open.
Yeah, because we'd like for people to understand where it's at, what the times are, especially the food.
Yeah, the kitchen's open from basically 4 to 10, and then we're open from 4 till whenever we're really empty to close.
Because it's funny, because the tavern business is so different than it was 30, 40 years ago.
Right.
Taverns aren't just about drinking, even smoking. Most of them don't smoke, I'm assuming.
No smoking.
No smoking, and they're about food now, and that's what draws in everybody, and that's what I think's so great about it. So on behalf of the 214,000 citizens, I'd like to congratulate your brother, you guys for being there, because like I said, it's not easy work, but you love what you're doing, you like the smiles, and you know everybody comes to the door.
Absolutely.
So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Cummings?
So today, we offer a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Sanderson Street Tavern in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County given this 10th day of July, 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Nortariani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Congratulations.
We'll have you come right around the horse track.
I have no idea where to go with this.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Are you friends, like family friends, Jerry?
Yeah.
Everybody look here and smile, let's make a couple. Take one more. Good, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. My kids get clean fanatics.
Hey, lots of people are coming in.
They got a tiny cooler out.
Okay, U.S. Department of Ag... Okay, Mr. Stiles, would you like to talk about the Department of Agriculture nominations? And this part of county government has really come to the forefront over the last three years and seven months due to the fact because of Commissioner Cummings. No, really, because I was here for four years before, and you would come in and you would talk about what was going on, and it's funny, I saw people, when you put them in, they're in the right position, which was appointed to your board, you know, I mean, she really got involved and really brings back stuff that the two of us really don't even hear about, you know what I mean? Water situations, different situations going on with fish, the silt, the, just a little bit about everything, and it's good because it gets out to the public because of ECTV and being on YouTube, so, but thank you for being here, Jerry.
Thank you very much for having us. At our recent, most recent Conservation District Board of Directors meeting, there was a representative there from USDA Farm Service Agency, and they were talking about some of the local initiatives that the Farm Service Agency has, and one of those is that they maintain some advisory committees so that there's local input on, into the programs that the Farm Service Agency administers. Obviously, USDA and Farm Service Agency, their headquarters is in Washington, but they want local input and to some of the decisions that are made on how their money is spent on a local level. So Lackawanna County is broken up into several what they call administrative areas, and each administrative area has a representative on the advisory committee. The representatives are made up of active farm producers who are registered through the Farm Service Agency. Each representative serves a three-year term, and the elections are administered by the Farm Service Agency themselves through mailed ballots. Eligible voters consist of participating farmers from within those administrative areas. Currently, nominations are open for what's called Local Administrative Area Number Two in Lackawanna County. So the municipalities in that area include Greenfield, Fell, Vandling, Carbondale, Jefferson, Roaring Brook, Elmhurst, Madison, Moscow, Springbrook, Covington, Clifton, and Thornhurst. So if there's any farm producer who has an interest in becoming a member of that local advisory committee through FSA, they should contact the FSA office, which is in Mayfield, at, the phone number is 570-280-3343.
So that's for anyone in those areas that would like to participate? They can just reach out, make a phone call?
That is correct. The representatives are made up of active farm producers who are registered through the Farm Service Agency. Each representative serves a three-year term and the elections are administered by the Farm Service Agency themselves through mailed ballots. Eligible voters consist of participating farmers from within those administrative areas. Currently, nominations are open for what's called Local Administrative Area Number Two in Lackawanna County. So the municipalities in that area include Greenfield, Fell, Vandling, Carbondale, Jefferson, Roaring Brook, Elmhurst, Madison, Moscow, Springbrook, Covington, Clifton, and Thornhurst. So if there's any farm producer who has an interest in becoming a member of that local advisory committee through FSA, they should contact the FSA office, which is in Mayfield, at, the phone number is five seven zero two eight zero three three four three.
So that's for anyone in those areas that would like to participate, they can just reach out, make a phone call?
That is correct, they do have to be a registered producer through the Farm Service Agency, but most of our farmers already are. So yes, most people, most farm producers would be eligible to be on that committee if they so choose and they live in that area.
And then they come to our, do we do the nominee, we just provide the nomination from the board or how do we do that? Because they're asking for a nomination.
It's all registered and goes through the Farm Service Agency, it really doesn't have anything to do with the, the Conservation District does not administer it, it's administered by the Farm Service Agency themselves.
Oh, good, so.
But they could come to our board meetings if they so choose.
Oh, okay. Now, how do they get the nomination through? Do they just apply?
Yes, yes, they, they, they would contact the Farm Service Agency and then they could find out more information on how they would apply to, for, to be part of the nominating process.
Okay.
And how many seats on the committee are there?
There's one per, I believe it's one per administrative area, Don, and I knew in Lackawanna County that there's at least two administrative areas.
So it'd be two seats potentially?
Yes, within the county. But they, our FSA office in Mayfield administers Lackawanna, Wayne, Pike, Susquehanna, so they have a, there's many different, there's many people on that advisory committee from the different counties.
Jerry, there's two individuals here that are going to speak to you after the, well, when you guys leave the meeting that would like to be nominated or have an opportunity to be involved in that.
Okay, that's fine.
Jerry, who's the deadline, which gives the deadline?
I, to be honest, Fran, I don't know, it's in, I know it is in August, I believe that it is in August.
Deadline is August first, last date of filing nomination forms at the local FSA County Office. And then the ballots are mailed to eligible voters on November fourth, twenty nineteen. And the last day to return the vote, ballots to the local FSA County Office is December second. And we'll keep this, we usually have this, we'll have this on our website at the county and I'm sure you'll have it on your website as well. But this is the actual mark, I don't know if you want to see the map for this area, just in case. And then we'll put this on the website as well, so if anybody wants any more information on that. And it is, I understand, a paid position?
That, I'm not sure about that, Commissioner, I, I do not know.
It is, yeah, we met with the, the woman that came in and talked to us about it, we don't know what the position is, what the amount of money is, probably just a stipend, but they get reimbursed mileage as well. And this is to go to the board meetings, to attend the board meetings that they have throughout the year. So I would encourage anyone in that area to please make sure that you give them a phone call and find out more information. And we had Kristen Eli that was going to represent the area and, you know, we have her information on file, if anybody has any questions for her.
Again, that phone number is five seven zero two eight zero three three four three.
You're awesome, thank you so much for coming and I appreciate your time.
And Jerry, what else we can do is, our chief of staff can speak to, to Mr. Rodway about having our representatives, when they go out to those communities, announce this, the next meeting or two, because it sounds like it has to all be in August, so it's only so many meetings between now and August, so if they'd like to, they can bring it up so if there's anybody like to come out, be part of it. Jerry, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay, ordinance second reading nineteen dash zero one five two.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an ordinance designating a no parking zone along Stauffer Industrial Park Road. The first reading was on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, this is the second reading being held. Ordinance number two fifty-eight, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, an ordinance designating a no parking zone along Stauffer Industrial Park Road, a county-owned roadway located in the borough of Taylor, Lackawanna County. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and whereas the County of Lackawanna adopted, owns, and maintains that cer- certain roadway known and designated as Stauffer Industrial Park Road in the borough of Taylor, Lackawanna County. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has the right to regulate traffic on all county roadways pursuant to two seven zero two and two seven zero five of the Pennsylvania County Code. And whereas, the county engineer has conducted a traffic evaluation of Stauffer Industrial Park Road and has recommended that it would be in the best interest and for the public safety that certain sections of this roadway be designated as a no parking zone. Now, therefore, by, resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna as follows. Number one, that portion of Stauffer Industrial Park Road in the borough of Taylor, Lackawanna County, between the intersection with Oak Street and its intersection with Continental Street in both directions is hereby designated as a no parking zone. Number two, the Department of Roads and Bridges is hereby directed to post no parking signs along the northerly and southerly lanes of Stauffer Industrial Park Road in the borough of Taylor, Lackawanna County, between the intersection with Oak Street and its intersection with Continental Street as set forth herein to conform with all applicable statutes and regulations. Number three, any violator of said posted no parking sign shall be subject to fine and penalties imposed pursuant to the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code Title seven five three three five three E. Number four, if a section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid for any reason by any court or competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Number five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect ten days after publication as required by law.
Commissioner, this is the second reading, so we're gonna ask for your vote on this tonight. And again, as indicated in the resolution, the county engineer and our Director of Roads and Bridges, Larry Lucasik, has reviewed the situation. Stauffer Industrial Park Drive is a county road, it services mostly warehouses and businesses in Stauffer Industrial Park. The problem we're having is trucks in that are parking on both sides of the road, they're blocking the road, we're unable to get trucks and vehicles through. We spoke to the borough of Taylor, they cannot do anything about it until we post it and officially designate it as no parking, so that's what this ordinance does tonight and it's the entire road from Oak Street all the way through Continental Street in Scranton.
I would just like to say that I've driven that road when there was parking, people parked on both sides and it is, it's, it's very, very dangerous, so this is absolutely...
Yeah, the tractor trailers and some of the warehouses are complaining because their trucks can't get through, it's delaying deliveries, it's delaying, you know, production for them and moving goods in and out.
Yeah, this is absolute, this is a safety issue, so it'll give them the opportunity now if they have, they can, they can cite them now, so this will work.
Correct, yeah, once this is done, the road will be posted and once it's posted, then the Taylor police can go in and they can start citing no parking.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I just wanted to make sure the residents, how do we get, let them know that this change is happening so that they know not to park there, is there gonna be any information other than...
Well, the, the, well, the road will be posted now, there's, this doesn't really service residents, Commissioner.
This is the big trucks that park on there.
Is parking there, I'm assuming it's residents?
It's tractor trailers, no, tractor trailers coming in.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, geez.
Maybe they're early or they're late, whatever, they're getting there, full on the side of the road, they're doing, and, you know, they're blocking the road.
And if you're a resident going through, it's very, it's very tight, very tight.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But there are no residences in the park, it's all, it's all industrial, it's industrial parks, it's all businesses and UPS and them are down there and I think Kane's down there.
By the railroad tracks we're talking?
That whole through, yeah, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Terri?
Well, and there are other places for the trucks to park, it's just more convenient for them to just leave it there. So this serves no useful purpose in reality, other than convenience for those trucks, the inconvenience everyone else, so, other, the trucks, so it's, it's a, it's a great thing to do.
My concern has always been a safety issue because the fact that driving through there, I've seen how tight it is and I know there's a lot of citizens that go back and forth that way and it's tight with both, and it's tractor trailers on either side. I'd like to motion, make a motion that designating a no parking zone along Stauffer Industrial Park Road, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Commissioner Nateriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes. Ordinance first reading nineteen dash zero one five one.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is ordinance number two fifty-nine, Uniform Parcel Identifier. This is the first reading, the second reading will be held on July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Ordinance number two fifty-nine, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county operating under the Home Rule Charter and Optional Plans Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, the Uniform Parcel Identifier Public Law Number One adopted January fifteenth, nineteen eighty-eight, as amended, twenty-one P S three three one E T, the U P I L authorizes counties to adopt a Uniform Parcel Identifier System upon the written recommendation of the County Recorder of Deeds. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County did adopt a Uniform Parcel Identifier System by ordinance number one-two-five on December nineteenth, two thousand, and amended the same ordinance, number two oh nine, on August twenty-fourth, twenty eleven. And whereas, the Recorder of Deeds of Lackawanna County has recommended in writing that the county amend the Uniform Parcel Identifier System ordinance to allow for the Tax Assessment Office to refuse to certify a land record where the grantor mortgage are not accurate. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained, that number one, Lackawanna County does hereby adopt pursuant to the U P I L, a Uniform Parcel Identifier System in Lackawanna County. Number two, the Lackawanna County Tax Assessment Office shall be the permanent depository of all county maps and shall provide for the recording of said maps in accordance with Section Five of the U P I L. Number three, the Lackawanna County Assessment Office shall assign to each parcel of real estate to be recorded in a document, a Uniform Parcel Identifier number PIN. After the effective date of this ordinance, all deeds, mortgages, satisfaction, releases, assignments, and other documents recorded in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds Office shall contain a Uniform Parcel Number for each parcel of real estate described therein and a certification from the Lackawanna County Assessment Office that the Uniform Parcel Identifier Number or Numbers set forth therein are correct. Number five, documents will be deemed unacceptable for recording without the proper certification stamp and the seal of the Lackawanna County Assessment Office. Number six, the Lackawanna County Assessment Office shall have the authority to refuse to certify any documents submitted for certifications where the Uniform Parcel Number and the identified grantor/mortgager in the document does not match the county assessment records or recorder of deeds records after being researched. Number seven, the Lackawanna County Assessment Office shall be authorized to charge a fee for each PIN certification shall be ten dollars, which shall be collected by the Recorder of Deeds at the time of recording. If a document contains multiple parcels, the cost for each parcel PIN certification shall be ten dollars per parcel PIN certified. Number eight, all ordinances and parts of ordinances inconsistent here within are hereby rescinded. Number nine, if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, which shall remain in full force and effect. Number ten, this ordinance shall take effect ten days after enactment. Again, this is the first reading of the ordinance. Here to speak on it, we have our very own Recorder of Deeds, Evy McNulty.
Thank you, Commissioners, I, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. In two thou, in two thousand, when I had asked for the UPI law to be put into place, not knowing it, but within a year, we discovered over a hundred and twenty-five properties that were not on our tax rolls through mortgage satisfactions, mortgage filings. As the law goes on, we realized that the assessment office, the ordinance didn't have any teeth, if you will, that there was no law, which it now will be from this ordinance, that the assessment office will not certify a document if that deed, the grantor, is not the current owner of record. And it would also stop mortgage fraud. It really, it, it has hit this county, but in some of the counties, it really is, is becoming an issue, an issue especially for the elderly. So this will protect them and it will just, you know, protect our, our property base, the tax base. And one other thing is, is it is a gen, a revenue source and I know that it is important, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we collect a year for the PIN certifications, but it is, what it is, is just certifying the fact that our land records are protected and the residents are, the homeowners.
Thanks, Evy. Two weeks from now, we'll have it in the Globe Store, the final reading.
Pardon me?
Two weeks from now, we'll have the, the final meeting in the Globe Store, so, thank you for coming in. Okay, I'd go right into resolutions, nineteen dash zero one five nine, approving current payables.
Thank you, Commissioner, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers two eight five one six seven through two eight five eight three six, inclusive totaling two million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling four million, six hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
I just wanted to confirm, we're gonna hold still.
Control ability?
All the voices, Commissioners, have been audited by, by our office and our in-order. As we discussed, we're...
We'll hold back the one, yes. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Nateriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one five three.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into a magistrate lease agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a lease agreement with a Moscow Fire and Hose Company for the magistrate's office, with the term of this lease shall commence on July first, twenty nineteen, and shall continue until the December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and to be fifteen hundred, seven dollars and seven cents per month. Here to speak on this resolution is Don Pedersen.
Thank you, Commissioners, we leased the property to the magistrate's office in Moscow. We've been doing it on a year-to-year lease at this point because the magistrate is looking for another location up there. It expired on December thirty-first of last year, so this is just renewing it to the end of this year. The lease amount remains the same, there's no change, it's the same rent, this will carry us to the end of this year and we'll see where we're at then with regard to the location.
Does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into magistrate lease agreement, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Commissioner Nateriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one five four.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is resolution supporting a zip code boundary review. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County supporting a zip code boundary review and issuance of a new zip code assignment for the Borough of Troop. Whereas, the Borough of Troop is a municipality located within Lackawanna County and was incorporated in eighteen ninety-four and was named after Dr. Benjamin Troop. And whereas, the Borough of Troop currently shares a U.S. Postal Zip Code with the Borough of Dunmore and the City of Scranton. And whereas, the sharing of a U.S. Postal Zip Code with these other municipalities creates confusion, delayed mail delivery, misdirected emergency services, and other undesirable consequences. And whereas, the mayor and council members in Troop Borough are currently petitioning the U.S. Postal Service to conduct a boundary review and assign a new zip code solely for the residents of the Borough of Troop. And whereas, the Borough leaders of Troop have reached out to the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, seeking their support in petitioning the U.S. Postal Service to conduct a boundary review and assign a new zip code solely for the Borough of Troop. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners supports the mayor and Troop Borough Council in seeking a boundary review and assign a new zip code solely for the Borough of Troop. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve as follows. Number one, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County joins the mayor, Borough Council, and residents of the Borough of Troop in requesting that the U.S. Postal Service conduct a boundary review and assign a new zip code solely for the Borough of Troop. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners supports the mayor and Troop Borough Council in seeking a boundary review and assign a new zip code solely for the Borough of Troop. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve as follows. Number one, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County joins the mayor, Borough Council, and residents of the Borough of Troop in requesting that the U.S. Postal Service conduct a boundary review and assign a new zip code solely for the residents of the Borough of Troop. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on July tenth, twenty nineteen.
I'm gonna make the motion in a second and then we'll bring the mayor and council up on the question. I'd like to make a motion supporting a zip code boundary reviewed, will you have a second?
Second.
On the question. Mayor, would you, council like to come up and let's talk a little bit about this for a second? Because this really does matter, like you said, you're just coming off your hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, the population has more than doubled and the citizens do deserve to have their own zip code, one eight five one three. So we'd love to have you come say a few words, I know that you're out there very busy getting all those signatures from the citizens and when I saw this, I just thought it'd be great for us to endorse, endorse the fact that you're gonna be trying to get your zip code. And it sounds like you have Congressman Matt Cartwright involved and I think other elected officials, maybe state senators, the rep and everybody else, they should all get on board because I think this is something that Troop really needs. And like I said, they always had their own identity, but they deserve to have their own zip code and they don't need to have any convenience where some of them might be going into Troop, might be going into Scranton. into Troop, might be going into Scranton, maybe Dixon, or into Dunmore. So this is a great opportunity. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Well, one thing, we've been trying to do this for a long time, and we hope we succeed. This wouldn't even come to this point if I didn't have the support of the council and members of the working staff and the residents of Troop. I have two petitions, actually. One petition is for Troop residents, from Troop residents, and then the surrounding towns in the area to not have our ZIP Code as they do now share it. So we're doing that. Many things happen from not having your own ZIP Code. You can have higher automobile insurance rates for drivers, residents are confused on where to vote, sales tax revenues rebated by the states are collected or directed to the wrong ZIP Codes, citizens are sending jury notices when they're not supposed to be, vehicles from police departments in fire and emergency may be misdirected, and confusion from what town has called. And then homeowners in expensive neighborhoods, they often complain that their housing values are diminished because of mailing addresses. The census is even involved in this, because there's money to be made or given to the each individual town, $650 billion across the United States. If you have your own census and a correct ZIP Code, you'll benefit indirectly or even directly. So those are some of the things that are in your favor, our favor, in our town, so we have our own ZIP Code. It's not an easy task to have this ZIP Code changed, from what I understand, but we're going to give it a try and go full steam ahead, and this is one effort that I want to really accomplish for the town. So thank you very much.
No, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thanks to the mayor, because he's the one that really took the bull by the horns in this issue. As he said, this has been going on for several years, but it kind of got reincarnated probably in the last two years, and he took it over as he became mayor. And in addition to all of the issues that he outlined, there are many similarly named streets. For example, there's Center Street in Troop, Center Street in Dunmore, Delaware Street in Troop, Delaware Street in Scranton, and Dunmore. So people are getting packages in mail delivered that don't belong to them, and so this will also help that aspect of it. In addition, there's another lower part of Troop that has the same ZIP Code as Alphon, I believe it's 1-8447.
Oh, really?
So it's a little confusing, and hopefully this will come to fruition and straighten it out. So thank you for the mayor, and thanks for, Commissioners, for supporting us. Appreciate it.
We're here for you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I think it's a great, and I hope that it does help you out in your endeavors and help us quickly. I hope they're not as slow as they are with delivering the mail.
Thank you for your support of our endeavor. We appreciate that very much with your...
Absolutely.
... your petition.
Yes, we'll have a letter set up for you, and it'll be signed by the three of us.
That'll be submitted.
Whatever you need, you can reach out to us, and Joe Drenzel will be the one that will be setting up the letter for us.
Okay, I will do that, and then we also, as you said, have the support on the federal and the state level.
Good.
I also, Senator, I have a congressman, and then Representative Mullins, and a senator.
Get a letter off everyone, because it all matters, because they'll look at everything at the end.
It shows that we mean business here. That's, I can just put it, that in that respect. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks again. And I'd just like to say, if there are any Troop residents in the audience tonight that haven't signed the petition, please see the mayor and do so.
Absolutely. Or anybody that wants to reach out to the mayor could always call to the municipal building.
Absolutely.
Come to your house.
Is there a phone number for the municipal building, for anybody that would like to call that lives inside?
Yes, 570-489-8311.
So that's for any citizens in Troop or the actual other areas that are sometimes getting the mail from Troop, or vice versa. So there's two different petitions, one for Troop and one for the outside, outlying areas, so. Okay, Commissioner O'Carroll?
Just a great job, Mayor, and you took the bull by the horns, and are out there working every day on it, and you carry your pad around, and you're a hard worker, and it's great that you took this upon yourself to work hard and get everyone's support to help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fran, could you make sure that this goes on our website, and their phone number and information, that they're going to be looking for? Mayor, we're going to put on our website, phone number and information, anybody who wants to sign your petition until, you know, we get to the August, September date, and you tell us to take it down, okay?
Okay.
And that letter will be coming forward in the next couple of days.
Okay, I'll look on your website.
Yeah, we're going to absolutely have it on there, but we're going to get a letter to you, a hard copy, and we'll put it even on our website, that we support you completely.
Good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. 19-0155.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution accepting a DEP grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Municipal Household Hazardous Waste Education Grant for a total of $13,832. Barb G. McNulty could not be here tonight, but this is a grant, obviously, to promote the education for environmental protection for household hazardous waste, to educate the general public.
Does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion accepting the DEP grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0158.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a letter of intent. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a letter of intent to participate in the 2019-2020 Gypsy Moth Suppression Program.
Is Mr. Dor... Okay, Mark?
I'm here on behalf of Rafael Genovese, he's our coordinator for Gypsy Moths. Right now, they sprayed in May, well, April, May, and everything's like suppressed for 2019, but this is an agreement to continue on for 2020.
Okay, does the board have any questions for... Not for Mr. Dor. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That is funny. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a letter of intent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0156.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an appointment. These are appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board: Maureen Taylor, District Administrator, Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, Bureau of Blind and Visual Services, term to begin on July 1, 2019, and expires on June 30, 2021. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board: Melinda Akuri, Marywood University, Title II Adult Basic Education (ABE) Grant Program Director, representing adult education and literacy, term to begin on July 1, 2019, and expire on June 30, 2021.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? This is Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. 19-0162.
This is an appointment to the County of Lackawanna Transportation System Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the County of Lackawanna Transportation System Authority: Michael Doherty, 70, Millennial Drive, Dunmore, term effective immediately and expiring on December 31, 2022; and Martha Dewar, 33, A, Park Garden, Scranton, term effective immediately and expiring December 31, 2023.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to Lackawanna County Transportation Systems Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0164.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is an appointment to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority: Robert M. Savakinis, 82, Lincoln Avenue, Carbondale, PA, 1-8407, term to commence immediately and expire on January 2, 2022.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to Lackawanna Heritage Valley Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0157.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to authorize the Purchasing Department to advertise for Request for Proposals, RFP, for newspaper legal advertisements.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the Purchasing Department to advertise a request for Proposals, RFP, for newspaper legal advertisements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. Okay, Commissioners, other business.
Wow, there's nobody? Okay. Well, sorry, Tom, but I am going to speak tonight, so apologies. I would like to thank Commissioner O'Malley for his, the item 19-0157, for looking for another local newspaper to advertise in, other than the one that we currently just seem to have to use all the time. So I do appreciate that, and I look forward to other newspapers applying for that position. There's a lot of money that goes out to advertise for the legal ads that we have for some of the issues, especially with tax, our tax office and tax sales, and positions that are held, and I'm sure all the boroughs do the same thing, and they have to advertise as well, so I do appreciate that. Thank you. I wanted to also talk about, I watched the Scranton City Council meeting, and I have no, I don't want to talk about anything, but this one gentleman who I did have come to the county, Mr. Shrebro, do you remember? He came here and he had, we tried to help him, he had a lot of water runoff issues down on...
Oh, yeah, that was about a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, this is the map where he lives. But he also, this gentleman had some issues with water runoff down on his, it's Merrifield Avenue, and the neighbors have been having this problem for a long, long time. So, you know, he had his property issues with that, but then his home burnt down. I don't know if you remember that, when he came in and he talked to us about it, his home actually burnt down. And, you know, I mean, it was though, you could look at it one of two ways, where, you know, he was having all this water runoff, where his house was getting destroyed from all the water coming into the basement and his garage, and, you know, always getting flooded there. Well, maybe he should just move now, and just take his, you know, take the loss and go. But nope, no he didn't. He rebuilt his home in the same exact spot, and, you know, he stayed there, and he's true blue to Scranton. He's a true blue Scrantonian that wants to stay there. He loves his neighborhood and his neighbors, and, you know, he went into Scranton City Council and talked about the fact that they still have this water runoff, which they do, and, you know, I hope that they get some attention in regards to that. But my biggest thing is, is that he talked about how he went and had to have his home reassessed. It's a new build, and now he's paying $5,000 more. So, you know, I just wanted to talk about it, because this is what's going to happen on a reassessment. And, you know, I have the stats on it. He did bring it to the public, so that's why I'm comfortable talking about it. He did not, I'm taking it upon myself to discuss this issue, because he brought it to the Scranton City Council meeting last week. And I did put a call out to him and tell him to try and come in and, you know, maybe look at getting his taxes lowered, because his question was, it's in a flood zone, do they take that into consideration? So I don't know the answer to that, but I did talk to John Foley, and he gave me the information on it, and I'm hoping that he gets his wish, because the poor man has been through enough, you know? He's, you know, continues to put up with the flooding issues and the water runoff. His house burnt down, and now when he does rebuild in the same exact spot, does not leave the city of Scranton, he's given a tax hike for doing so. So that's just the way it works in tax land, and it's just a fact of life, and, you know, it's proven time and time and time again. I also had seen some articles in the paper this past week in regards to Ron Koljeski, and I was wondering if you can refer to this letter in regards to the taxes, if you can talk about that, or if anybody wants to talk about that, where Ron Koljeski wrote a letter to the editor asking...
I didn't see it.
About, you know, charging taxes to us because of the restaurant that came downstairs. So if that's the case, I mean, I don't know, is that possible that they can charge taxes to a restaurant that's making a profit in our building?
Well, no, they're rental, they don't own the property. You mean, they'll pay their normal like anybody else that rents a downtown Scranton.
Yeah, the real estate taxes are imposed on the owner of the property, it should be the county, not the restaurant.
Right.
So if we were to tax it, have to tax ourselves, what it would be basically.
He's comparing it to a nonprofit, which I don't...
We're not a nonprofit.
Exactly, it sounds like he's trying to compare it, it's misplaced.
Okay, because he's saying the lease should have a tax clause stating that for a profit business pays. I just wanted to respond to that.
They pay their taxes, I'm sure they pay their sales tax, whatever they...
Right.
Merchant bill tax, if you had the city, and sales tax.
Yeah, coming into the city, because they were outside the area, they're inside the area, you know?
Well, I mean, that just opens it up to the University of Scranton and all the places that rent off of them, is what I foresee, you know, so why is he not attacking them? I don't know, maybe it's because he doesn't work here anymore, but they're a loss to us. But actually, Dean, and I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up, because I wanted to see what our response was in regards to that, and what the other two Commissioners thought about that letter, because there was some information brought up at the Scranton City Council meeting on that. And that's about all I have. Thank you very much.
I didn't see the letter. Mr. Drenzel, do you want to draft the letter in response to it? Go over with Don.
It wasn't from the Scranton City Council, it was from one of the attendees that was there, Marie Schumacher.
The letter was actually in the Scranton Times?
Yes, the letter was in the Scranton Times, this is it.
So we can answer the question, okay? Okay, Commissioner O'Carroll?
No, I'm good.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, all the citizens for letting us come up and use their municipal building. It's a beautiful building, and we're definitely going to try to come back here when we're doing our budget cycle, which will be coming up in October. But there's lots going on in Lackawanna County. I just want to go over a couple of things that are just going on inside Lackawanna County itself. July 13, we're going to be having a Family Fun Day, 11 to 2 p.m. at Merly-Sinowski Park. And on July 16, we're going to be having Art in the Park, 10 to 12 p.m. at Covington Park. These are all free family events. And anybody that would like to reach out to the park to ask any questions, they can call 963-6764. And the other one will be July 20, and it's another Family Fun Day, 11 a.m. to 2 p.m., that's Covington Park, again. Now, you gotta understand, the Arts in the Park is different. The Arts in the Park, which will be on July 16, there's all kinds of arts, crafts, painting, you name it, free hot dogs, lemonade, there's swimming. All of our parks are swimming free, three lakes, two pools, all free for the citizens of Lackawanna County. And the July 20 is actually, that's a Saturday, so families can just come out and enjoy Family Fun Day with free hot dogs, lemonade, I think there's music, and they'll be able to go swimming.